Good evening. This is the regular meeting with the Arts and Culture Commission. Today is Thursday, January 18th, 2024. Happy New Year, everybody. It's gotta get used to saying that, 2024. Seeing a quorum, this meeting is officially called to order. Madam Recording Secretary, please take roll call.
Commissioner McNair?
Here.
Commissioner Russell?
Here.
Commissioner Vu?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez-Guerra? Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Rivera? Thank you, we have quorum.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. At this time, members of the public may address the Arts and Culture Commission regarding any non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the committee. No action may be taken on non-agenda items unless authorized by law. Does the Madam Recording Secretary, does the public have any comments they wish to speak or wish to share with the commission? And please know, you have three minutes to speak. No public comments. Okay. So moving on to our consent calendar. This is the time for the commission to consider matters under consent calendar item number one. Do I have a motion to consider item number one?
I motion.
Thank you, Vice Chair Vu, do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Russell. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'm calling for a vote. So, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I forgot to say aye. Any abstain? Okay, thank you. Now we have, we're so happy that Commissioner Rivera is here. So, this, sorry. Moving on, now we have a work-study session. So we have two items under the work-study session. Please note that there will be no motion or action taken on these items. The first item under work-study session is investing in the Artist Grant 2023-24 grantee presentations. So, Tram, would you set us up for those presentations?
Thank you, Chair McNair. Yes, it's my pleasure to introduce some of the grantees that received funding from our artist grants, which it's a great tradition we're starting now, is to have you present your projects as well as yourself. So please, Donnell and Debra from the Orange County Contemporary.
Senator.
Yes, Senator for Contemporary Arts, thank you.
You go ahead, introduce yourself.
I'm Debra Vodhanna, one of the artist's members.
Donnell Poppy. I want to tell you a little bit about our organization. We've been in existence for over forty years, in our present location for thirty, in the Art Village. It's an artist-owned and run gallery. We're the ones sitting in the gallery when the gallery is open. We do everything except clean the floors. It's, it's an unusual thing because we've been around for forty years, which is an exceptionally long time to have a gallery of our size. That's owner, that's artist-owned and run, and it's a wonderful learning experience. So we're really excited and thankful that you've given us this grant because it allows us to expand our awareness to the neighborhood. And that's what we really want to do. We have people that walk by the gallery, and I have to sit there, you know, a couple of weekends a month. And you see people walk by, and I mean, I've walked out and said, hi, come on in, see our art, it's free. And we now put up a sandwich board sign saying, view the gallery, it's free. But people are a little intimidated, so that's why we really are looking forward to using the money to reaching out to all the neighborhoods to get them hopefully, come in, see what we've got, see our classes. And that's what we're using a lot of the grant is for. So there's two main things that we're using the grant for. One is to increase our operations for art walk on, on the first Saturday of the month. And we had, we really got hard hit by COVID. And this one that Debra did, can we have our PowerPoint up?
Well, that's the first slide.
Okay, if we can go to the next one. That's our location on Sycamore and Second Street. Been there thirty years. One more? And so these are our, the art walk receptions, and we have nine of those. And we had the first one.
January sixth.
You want to talk about that?
Sure, so next slide. Okay, so this just shows you all the art walks and nine art walks this year that you guys have paid to help support our openings. And we'll promote them in all six wards. On the left is the OCA poster that we will, as soon as we get it printed, going to distribute it to all the wards. So next slide. And this is the art show card we had for our first opening. It was actually interesting. We paired with Skowhegan, which is an artist residency in Maine. They've done a lot of, they're based in New York, and they, they've done a lot of art events for the East Coast. This is the first time they've ventured to do anything on the West Coast. And they have like about 2,000 alumni that are within driving distance of Santa Ana. So those are the people that we did an open call to. The show is about being displaced from where you grew up, or having, having somehow to change your identity. Anyway, there were a lot of different interpretations from the twenty-eight artists that the two curators picked. So next slide. So here's one of them, we actually got from our press release. We got written up in the LA Times and the Daily Pilot. And from that, we got even more money from Skowhegan. So they're now paying for us to have a catalog, to have professional photography done of the show, and an art, professional artist critic write up about the show. So we're very excited that we're gonna have a catalog. Okay, next slide. This is just some shots from installing this artist, Jonah Wong. This is a piece about his father and being sort of not having his father in his life. Very personal pieces, most of these pieces were very personal. Next slide. Installation from Enrique Martinez Alea. He actually is pretty well-known, at least in the art world. And Skowhegan twisted his arm to give us a painting because he wants to teach at Skowhegan during the summer. That's how we got this painting. It's called King of the Night. Next slide. And this artist, Jan Nunn, came up from San Diego for her installation of spikes. Those are actual railroad slices, spikes that she puts together with rare earth magnets. Next slide. And here's the, the promotion that Skowhegan did on their social media. And on the left is Marcel Alcayla, who just, he just was in the Made in L.A. show at the Hammer Museum. It just came down last week. But he actually grew up in Santa Ana, so he's our one very local resident. Next slide. And this is from a Filipino immigrant, Eliseo Silva. I just think his work is beautiful. This has a really interesting perspective, but he actually just got a commission from the Archdiocese of L.A. to fresco the inside of the cathedral, the Filipino cathedral in downtown L.A., which he's very excited about. Okay, next slide. And these are just some more examples of, there are over forty works. I hope you can come, it's gonna be up until January 27th. Next slide. And this Sterling Wells, this was, oh, it's tiny homes for homeless, for people who are homeless. This one, this is just a detail from it, but we've gotten a lot of, a lot of interest in this painting. Next slide. And here's the King of Nightfall, again, from Enrique. Next slide. And here's our opening, we had two musicians. You paid for it, thank you so much. It was just beautiful music and the food from Safran Grill. Next slide. We had over seven hundred and four, I think I saw the counter was actually ended up at seven hundred and six visitors, which is more visitors than we've had since COVID. Next slide. Just some people looking at the slides, and we actually have two interns now from UC Irvine. And these are photographs that they took. Next slide. And just more pictures from the art walk, opening reception. We have over five video installations in the show. You can see one of them in the upper right. And you can take over.
This is our next show that's coming in, and it's about street art. And we have a really well-known curator that's handling this show. And the opening is February third on Saturday Art Walk, and we invite you all to please come by and drop by and see our gallery. We're really thankful to the city of Santa Ana because we feel that you've really helped us step up the art walk. And we're trying to get people in the door. There's a lot of people in, that attend the art walk, but they don't necessarily come in our gallery. So we're hoping with the music and food that will generate more people coming in. Our other element that we're really happy to see increase is that we've had an art education setup that for years we've had art education. And, next slide, please. These are the workshops that the city is helping to fund. And they're generally taught by people that are exhibiting are members of OCA. And we're really happy to be able to facilitate that. We also have some elementary school kids that attend workshops on a separate things, but these are, these are the ones that are funded by our grant that you've given us. And this is one of our local artists, Jeanne did, I can never say her last name. Here's, here's another one that's coming up on June eighth. And then we have one more for the next slide. So we're really, we're really happy to see that we have a great caliber of artists that are coming in. And we're hoping that the neighborhood will join us and take the classes.
That's the last one.
Yeah, and this is one of our workshops with the kids. Do you have any questions? And we have a pop-up show that's also part of this, that's in December?
December seventh.
Yeah. And when we had, we had a, a show, and this choral group came in from the high school and serenaded us on, on Christmas, right before Christmas. And it was really serendipitous and really a lot of fun.
They said they would come back.
Yeah. Yeah. And if you guys have any suggestions on outreach to the neighborhood? We generally, we'd really like that. We're gonna go to each of the wards, and we have, that's one of the things that the interns are doing. But any input, we'd love to hear it. Thank you.
Any questions, commissioners?
We thank you very much, we really appreciate it.
Well, I just have, not a question, but since you asked. I know so many neighborhoods have their own newsletters. And, you know, I'll get recommendations for restaurants and, and things like that. So I definitely recommend trying to find out who, you know, find out the name of the neighborhood organization, and then, because sometimes they'll even organize, you know, let's all go to this new restaurant to support it. And I could see them also going to an art exhibit.
Yeah, that'd be great. Our last one we're doing is, is gonna be kids of all ages, so that it's more of a family-oriented workshops. And that's, that's gonna be at the, in December, so. We're trying to reach out to everybody, but thank you for that input.
Does the, the Urban Expression one is the next one, right?
It's the next one, yeah.
Who is curating that, or?
I'm very embarrassed, I don't know the curator's name.
Okay, no worries, if you don't have it off the top of your head.
Yeah, sorry.
Um, yeah, maybe I would suggest leaving items at community centers or senior centers, right? Come to mind. Like the Delhi Community Center or Southwest Senior Center, right? Those things come to mind. And I'm just generally curious if there's like an art walk coordination with the different galleries to do like monthly maps of where different, you know, expositions are happening. If not, that's definitely something that.
We do have that right now on our front desk, Susan Art Walk map. But you're right, it probably could be updated.
Or coordination with the Frida and other folks that are a part of it.
Yeah, I've talked, I've spoken with the coordinator before, and she was really helpful. I'll go back to her though on that. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, just one more. Libraries, posting at libraries?
I would also offer in addition, because I thought of the neighborhoods, there are sixty-four neighborhood associations. All of them have their own newsletters and everything, and there is a contact at the city you can reach out that would help organize. But also consider the school district. Since it is, was our high school students, you know, who showed up in your gallery in a more kismet way, we've, we actually would welcome a stronger collaboration with the school district and the local arts galleries and everything that are going on.
That's a really good lead, a follow-up, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Donnell and Debra. And next is Isa Ley, who will be presenting on Viet Film Fest.
Hey, hi, my name's Isa Ley, and I'm currently the Executive Director of VAALA, which is Vietnamese-American Arts and Letters Association, which is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. And Viet Film Fest is one of our projects. We do film festivals, it's an annual film festival. We also do book festival, it's Viet Book Fest. And last year we did it at Santa Ana Public Library, as well as at the Frida Cinema. And we also do exhibitions, and we did one in 2022 at OCA. And that was a beautiful space. And so Viet Film Fest is an annual film festival organized by VAALA. Next slide, please. And our mission is to, the festival mission is to celebrate Vietnamese stories and voices in cinema. And we just celebrated our twentieth anniversary last year. And it's known for its innovative and diverse lineup of shorts and features submitted from all over the world. For example, from Japan, Korea, of course, Vietnam, all over the U.S. And the criteria is if you are a Vietnamese filmmaker of Vietnamese descent, the topics could be anything. But if you are not Vietnamese descent, then the topic needs to be of Vietnamese stories, of Vietnamese culture. And it's, it's, the festival was founded because there, there's been a lack of voices in Vietnamese representation in the U.S., especially. Because, for example, you see a lot of productions by Hollywood talking about the Vietnam War, but our Vietnamese people have always been in the backyard, in the, in the, in the back. And so we need to feature our stories prominently, and it's, it's because it's our stories, it's our, we need to share our voices and, and so forth. So, the next slide, please. So that's why we come up with Viet Film Fest. And, and so we, we, we're very grateful for the support from the Frida Cinema. When we first started the festival, it was run at UCI. And then also some screenings were held at UCLA, and some screenings were held at Westminster. And then we moved to AMC. So we moved around a lot because we didn't have a home. And we finally found Frida Cinema, which is a two-screening, two-room, two-theater room theater. And, and the staff is very, very supportive with Trevor leading the staff. And so we, we, we did Viet Book Fest there in May, and, and actually early June last year. And then we came back with Viet Film Fest in October. So we feature forty-four short films and eleven features. And we also had a lot of filmmakers that came from all over the world, from France, from Ireland for the first time, and from all over the U.S. came to attend the film festival. Next slide, please. So we, we find out that films is a universal language, and it could be shared by all, a lot of, by different ethnicities, as well as different generations. And all of the films shown at VIF, if they're not English-speaking, they have to have English subtitles. That's the criteria. And we are proud to be a central platform for filmmakers to share their stories. And we organize networking events like receptions and panels to connect local businesses with film industry, artists, and the public. And you can see on the slide that we had our award ceremony that was held at the Stagall Performing Arts Center in Front Valley. But this year, we're hoping that we could hold the reception at the Bowers Museum, hopefully, so that we could bring everything to Santa Ana. And, next slide, please. So the highlights of Viet Film Fest is actually the Community Day, where we give the audience the chance to, we, we opened up a lot of screenings, free screenings to high school students and to senior citizens. And as well as we, we held one screening that was free to citizens of Santa Ana City. And they often have to show their ID. And we had seven hundred and sixty high school students came from local high schools, and they were transported by buses to, to go to the festival. And, and of course, the Frida Cinema almost ran out of popcorn, the kids were hungry. And the, the interactions between them and the filmmakers were priceless. They, they were really into the films, they clapped, and they, they learned about the contemporary issues through films. And, and so we were very happy to see them. Next, please. And so this was done at the late of last year, so we didn't have the cute revived Santa Ana logo on it yet. But we would like to extend the film festival to three days instead of two days in person. Next, this year, October eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth. And also we still run the virtual program, which will be from October fifth through the twentieth. And the virtual program is the silver lining from the pandemic. Because that was when we, we were down to two in-person screenings, and we figured that we need to do something to, to, to satisfy the, the audience. And at that time, that's why we came up with the virtual program. And it's, it's very useful because now we can serve people from, from other states as well, hopefully. So, yeah, so that's a Viet Film Fest. And our website is www.vietfilmfest.com. And our VAALA website is vaala.org, so if you'd like to learn more about the organization. And we're very, very thankful for the sponsors, the grant from the city of Santa Ana, so that we can continue the festival. And hopefully, we can expand it for twenty more years. Do you have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I happened to encounter some of those young people who must have come on Community Day. I was going to get coffee, and they were trying to figure out where the Frida Cinema was. And it was so wonderful to be able to say, well, welcome to Santa Ana, and welcome, you know, to an arts experience here in our city. So it was just such a joy.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thanks, yeah, thank you.
And next is Peggy Iriate, to talk about her mosaic mural.
I'm Peggy Iriate, and I'm an artist. And I'm so grateful, so thankful to be here. I brought up some little samples, I'll show you guys in a little bit. So my proposal is to make a community mosaic mural. I've been working with a community here in Santa Ana for the last two years. I've been painting murals with Moses Camacho, and anybody who wants to come paint with us Saturdays, so anybody. But I fell in love with that. I realized that we are all so unique, each one of us, but together we create magic. And so my whole goal now is collaborating, working with the community. So this is like a really special project for me. And next, next slide, please. Okay, so my proposal is, what I'm, I have these little cut-out wooden parrots. I'm gonna use thirty of them. So we're gonna get the wooden parrots, and with Gorilla Glue, we're gonna adhere mosaic, iridescent, glass, ceramic tiles to, to the little parrot. And then the next, the next slide will show you my idea. So these are just different ideas of how we're gonna put the little glass tiles. Some are gonna be chipped, some are gonna be different shapes. Everybody is going to do their own parrot, and they'll do it their style. So that's what the whole uniqueness comes with everybody working. This is just a, thanks to other people. I do, and different things like that. Ultimately, it's gonna be on the Santa Ana Art Walks. Oh my gosh, guys, I'm so sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry, yeah. So the, the mosaic mural is gonna be made in three Santa Ana Art Walks. The first Saturday of every month, February, March, and April. And we're gonna start ten o'clock in the morning, and we're gonna go till eight P.M. at night. Anybody can join us, I already have lots of friends, artists, non-artists, just anybody just really, you know, interested in the, in the project. And next, this was my inspiration. This was my very first mosaic mural that I made in 2022 with my art group, Settle Back Visual Arts. I designed it, and I helped create it with community. That's just a picture showing we had like the different tiles and different buckets and things to keep things organized. This was a pretty large one, and so we again used Gorilla Glue adhesive, and then just adhered the glass mosaic and iridescent tiles. And the magic of it is when it's done, and like you're walking by, and the sun is just hitting it, and those iridescent tiles are like magic, they're like magic. Yeah, so, so this is, this is my proposal. And so after, after we create all, there I go again, so sorry. After we create all the, the parrots, my goal is to exhibit all thirty mosaic parrots as one whole community mural. So my idea is to have all them flying, mm, sorry, all of them flying in different directions, kind of like a flock. And these are the Santa Ana parrots, which we all know are so famous. So my, my proposal is, yes, we're all unique by ourselves, but together in community, we're unstoppable. And depending where I show, I wanna show in different galleries. I have different friends, I have different studios in Santora Building. I wanna hit up like the libraries, different public places. I'm showing my art right now in Career Studio, so maybe in the future I can do an installation. And what I love about having these single like this is wherever I go, whatever gallery or whatever wall space, I can change it to that form. I can have them swooping in, I can have them, you know, doing different things. So that's, that's the beauty of it. And I just wanted to thank you all for this opportunity, because this has like been like one of my dreams. And you guys are making it happen. Thank you, do you guys have any questions?
I have a comment.
Okay.
I'm super excited about it. I love that one of your full days like that overlaps with Boca de Oro, that will be on March second, with lots and lots of youth flooding into the city.
They love it.
So it'd be amazing for them to be able to intersect and, and engage in community art-making and help be part of that.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll get more information.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you, guys.
We just want to add also, you know, we have so many murals in Santa Ana, and I love murals, I want to see more. But I do love the uniqueness of your project and how you're really tying it into something that is, the people, when people think of Santa Ana, you know, or people who live here, I think, because, you know, there are green parrots in a lot of cities. I was just listening to someone talk about how they're an orange, and I thought, well, they're.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In a couple, San Francisco, every, but I just really appreciate that you are tying it into something local and trying to, and branch out in the different art forms, so.
Thank you so much. And you know what, guys, one of the most important things, just to throw it out there, when I showed you the mural, the mosaic mural earlier of my inspiration, that whole concept came of, we all have sorrows and things that hurt us or that break us. And so the whole idea is we're gonna, I'm gonna have different types of tiles already cut and this and that, but there's gonna. and this and that, but there's gonna be some bigger pieces of tile. And of course, it's gonna be completely safe, because we've done this before, completely covered with plastic. We have goggles, everything with fabric and everything. But the whole idea is, we're gonna get these tiles in representation of like the sorrows or the things that we are going through, and we're gonna break them. We're gonna break the past. We're gonna break that sorrow. I'm getting emotional. I'm not gonna do this in a minute. And so, oh, I'm doing it. I'm not gonna do it. So we're gonna get the tiles, those broken tiles. I'm doing it. We're gonna create amazing art with the community. We're gonna create magic, guys. I'm doing it in public. But I just love what I do. And I'm so blessed that you guys gave me this grant. I'll make you guys proud. I'll make you proud.
We appreciate your passion and that driving, healing-centered engagement in this community. We need that.
Yeah, and I love Santa Ana.
Yeah, and thank you for creating these spaces.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. That is exactly the theme, actually, of Art Heels, right? Of this grant. So and finally, we have Sarah Johnston from Showtime Ballet.
Flyers to hand out would be like a visual aid. So we produce the Second Annual Santa Ana Nutcracker Ballet. So we have some programs for you. And then here's our basic flyer that we sent out, too. So a quick synopsis of our company history. Showtime Dance started as an after-school program that was all over Orange County. And then I bought it in 2013, lived in Orange for a long time, and then moved to Santa Ana about two years ago. And I went, where's the ballet? This is such a beautiful arts district. There's no ballet? So then I went, all right, that's up to me. So we opened a studio. We're right... I don't know where I am when I'm inside a building, but it's at the very end of Fourth Street. I walked here. So that opened about two years ago. And one of those beautiful, I believe our building is from 1910. And then I went, I miss the Nutcracker. It's such a part of being a dancer. It's such a part of holiday tradition, where you see kids... Oh, this year I'm a mouse. Now I'm gonna be a soldier, and then someday. It always gives them that goal. Even if they don't become a ballerina, it's this family tradition. And when I lived in Arizona, we created a Flagstaff Nutcracker that was based in our town. So I don't know how familiar you are with the story, but it's a very silly story. It starts at a Christmas party. This girl, sometimes she's Clara, sometimes she's Marie. She gets a nutcracker. Her brother breaks it. The rest is a dream. There's mice, there's soldiers, they fight. She goes to Candyland. That's about it. She wakes up. It's a very silly story. But we wanted to make it something that was enjoyable for a community. So in that production, instead of having, I don't know how to say this nicely, except racist stereotypes, in the second half, we made it authentic. So there's Spanish chocolate, and there's Arabian coffee and Chinese tea. And the way these stereotypes are still presented in classical ballet is, it hurts. And so we can't do that. We cannot do that. So in Arizona, we set the second act of the Grand Canyon, and everyone was a tourist. So we had flamenco for Spain, and we had traditional Chinese dance. And we had an actual belly dancing group come and show their real art. So then, when I came here, I said, this is what Santa Ana needs. And also the diversity, that it's such a stereotype that, I'm sorry, a ballerina looks like me, and she shouldn't have to. So it's very important to me that our company is diverse in size, in ethnicity, in background, in income. So as you can see from the names on the programs, we are very diverse. And I'm very proud of that, because I don't want my baby girls growing up thinking there's only one way to look like a ballerina. So, long story short, we did it last year, and it was a wonderful show. We loved it, and we lost $20,000 of my personal income. Our entire savings is gone. So the nonprofit account is down to $14.62 after this year's production. So again, that came out of my savings. That came out of, I'm gonna get paid $500 this month. So it's tough. It's tough. We love the High School Theater. It's gorgeous, and we wanna keep it here. We want everything to be here. So it's $10,000 for a weekend. And it's another, I think, $1,800 for a crew. And that's not even paying my artists. So, you know, and I want to give, and I want to give, and I want to give. But there is no way we couldn't do this without you guys. So I so appreciate that this will ensure the continuity, because I want this to be an annual tradition. So I made a compilation. It's kind of a long video, but I took a two-hour show and made it fifteen minutes. So what I wanna show you is the free show that we were able to provide because of the grant. We invited Girl Scouts to come see a free show. And we had Boys and Girls Club, and we had Big Brothers and Big Sisters. So come with their mentors. And we interviewed the girls to see what their favorite part of the show was. So if it's not too long of a video, I'd love to share it.
Have a flash drive?
Yeah.
And I have it on the laptop.
Okay. I know I sent a file, but disclaimer, I am not a professional film editor. I figured out iMovie.
Perhaps we could see...
You can absolutely fast-forward.
And then...
Yes, of course.
Provide a way to...
Yes, and that... Oh, sorry, that flash drive has the entire show. Is there a way to plug in my computer to the edited version? I brought my laptop. Oh, darn. I sent the file. Did it not come through?
I didn't see the file at all. I hope we like it.
Hmm, I just sent it yesterday.
Well, we can watch that.
That's fine. It's the whole show. So I can narrate a little bit. We got, yeah, played from the top. Yeah, so we actually got a little bit of help from the Historical Society, too, to make sure our costumes were authentic. So the amazing ball gown that I am wearing is from a couple that used to do Civil War reenactments. So we set it at the founding of the city. So it starts with a warm summer day in 1869. So what we also do is that we kind of have a Wizard of Oz thing going, which again is from this other Nutcracker we created in Flagstaff, where I played Clara's mother and the Snow Queen. So it's this whole story of family coming back together. So in our version, we gave Clara a sister, and they're squabbling the whole time. And then their mother brings them back together at the end. So it's a whole story about family. Talking about the parrots, I would love to put the parrots in a future version to have, oh, my gosh, I have these fabulous costumes. I just need the dancers to put in them. It's like tutus with green tails. And, oh, my gosh, I can just see like the sound of the point. She was getting louder and louder and louder to be those parrots, because they fly over our roof every night at eight o'clock. Oh, man.
It looks like, yeah, we're having technical difficulties.
Oh, my gosh. I mean, I could pull up my laptop and just show you. Do you wanna do that?
Or if you send it a link, Tram can send it to the commissioners and watch it.
I sent the Dropbox folder. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, darn.
I will say, though, because this would have been your second year.
Yes.
I saw the first year.
Did you?
Yeah.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah, it was, I see what you're trying to do and create. And I appreciate it. And bringing opportunities for kids to experience it and elevate their opportunities. Does it just expand their minds and thinking and where you're headed?
Thank you.
I'm happy that we are supporting what you're doing.
And it was a little different this year. It was bigger. It was better. We were not able to have the Chinese dancer from last year come back, but we had Soul on Fire Dance Studio from right down the street. So they did the Arabian section. We had Santa Ana College Folklorico. So instead of Spanish hot chocolate, we had Mexican hot chocolate. Yeah, so we try to make it very here-focused.
I observe that, and I'm sure you're at the beginning, and it will continue to evolve and refine and as you integrate into this amazing community.
Yeah, and it was nice to have the Girl Scouts as like, at first, it was almost like an extra dress rehearsal, because it was just these kids. And just to hear how excited they were, it was really great. And we brought in some other soloists, some really professional, truly excellent dancers to do the Sugarplum Fairy. And you could just hear the audience go, ah! And there was one part when the snow fell, and you just heard this little girl in the front go, mommy, did you see that? I'm like, that's it. That's art. That's it. It's that little girl who just had that moment of, oh, my gosh, that's so cool. So that's what we wanna do, is to make it bigger and better. Because I want Santa Ana to have a Nutcracker. It can call its own. So we're gonna keep working on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry about the technical difficulties. Man, I'll send you it again. It only takes two hours to edit down to a fifteen-minute video. Oh, gosh, I like it. I think it turned out good. Thanks so much. I appreciate it.
That conclude the presentations of our grant recipients?
Yes, that concludes the presentations for this month, and there'll be more next month.
How exciting. Something to look forward to.
Yes.
All right, the second item under the Work Studies session is the Arts and Culture Special Events Sponsorships for January 2024. So, Tram?
Yes. I'm so sorry. Well, from last time, we had, we started, we had at the end $24,330 to distribute for the sponsorship program. However, there was a recipient who had to withdraw from the program. And so we ended up having an extra $6,500 to add to the pot, making it a total of $30,830. So we were able to give a few more grants, but our sponsorships, rather, I'm sorry. And then, if you flip to the end, we actually have a little bit more to go, one more round. However, this last, this will probably, and every time I say it, there'll be a last round. Watch, there'll be a little bit more. But no, I mean, I think at this rate, that's probably going to cover the next round. We may even have to give less, like that last round of the last year, because people are asking more. You may recommend more than what we have available. But we were out of fourteen applications. We were able to distribute eleven, funding for eleven recipients. The first one is, again, no particular order. First one is Mark Di Malanta, who is doing an event titled My Existence Through My Lens: A Creative Expression of Neurodivergence Through Photographs. Received $3,400. Second one is Academy of International Dance. For their event World Fusion Dance Concert Performance, they received $3,110. The next one is Delhi Neighborhood Association, receiving fund for their event Delhi Neighborhood Reunion 2024. They received $2,000. Next one is El Soul Science and Arts Academy, receiving funding for their event El Soul Spring Festival Santa Ana Sueña. They received $4,333. The next one is the Frida Cinema for their event International New Wave Spring at the Frida Cinema. They received $5,175. The next one is the 1901 Project for their event Racist Renás. Cultura y Comunidad: Roots Reborn, Culture and Community. Their amount is $3,333. The next one is Soul on Fire Dance for their event Annual Recital. They received $2,833. The next one is Showtime Dance Incorporated for their event Showtime Ballet Company Spring Dance Celebration. And they received $2,750. Next one is Mana Mural Project for their event Mana Mural Project. And they received $3,217. The next one is Orange County Educational Arts Academy for their event Latino Voices and Identity. Their funding is $3,500. And finally, Willard Neighborhood Association for the Willard Safe Street Crosswalk Celebration. And they received $3,500. And there were three applications that did not get funded. Any questions, commissioners, or any comments about the different applications for the final round?
I just wanna, again, I took a look at all the different applications from these last two rounds, because we did miss a meeting together. And I'm just so enamored with the diversity of art forms, from literacy, film, lots of dance. I really, I think dance tends to be very well represented. Murals, chalk, so the visual arts, photography. And we had someone from the DJ, a DJ proposal.
Class, yeah, DJ workshops.
Yeah, which is kind of music, but also sort of a little different.
Yeah.
And then someone, you know, the exhibition that will highlight neurodivergence. So we have representations from the disability community. And I think there was one about from a natural, something about nature, going to nature, which I can make this round. But again, I think it's just such an interesting spread of different types of opportunities that we are both being proposed to happen here in Santa Ana and then also, you know, the ones that are getting approved. Because I know sometimes people, they don't get it approved this round, and then they try again. And I do hope the people who did not make it this past round consider, because I appreciate seeing so many different forms of art that are highlighted. And so I just wanted to make that comment.
Yes, and this seems to be a great vehicle for folks who have never applied for any grant before. So I'm noticing a lot of new folks, and so this is a great entryway for them.
Yeah, I guess I have a question. So when someone accuses themselves, that counts as a no?
Yeah, it can't count as a yes.
Can it? I'm not, I don't understand how he... I don't know if we've had this discussion, or this is kind of what we'd all agreed upon, but...
Well, the agreed upon is that they have to get at least four yeses. So if there's a recusal, then they have to get four yeses somewhere else. I know.
I think it's because we also are sort of, we're not fully represented as a commission, because we're still vacant one commissioner. So if we were a fully staffed commission...
Okay.
Yeah, I know. There's some that I do feel like I wish, yeah, but...
Okay, I just wasn't sure. And I don't know if we've come across this situation before. But yeah, I mean, all the more reason to get our other seed filled by our council member. And yeah, I think in general, as I've mentioned before, it's, the goal is to not fully fund the event, but to add some sort of seed money, you know, to jumpstart and to spread the resources to as many organizations as possible. I got, I think we were giving a lot of money early on. So if there's anything to take away from these sponsorships is, apply early. Apply the first chance that you get, because that's when the maximum amount of funds were given out. And so, you know, early bird gets the worm in all sorts of ways. Because the less money I feel that I see, and perhaps, you know, my colleagues up here as well, you know, the more we wanted to spread it out. So I'm just generally... And then also, we got twice as much money as we did last year. I'm hoping that we'll get the same amount next year. But it is, it's always my goal to be able to fund as many organizations as possible. And for a while, for a second there, it was looking like we were gonna fund less organizations than we did with twice as much money as we did last year. And that was not okay for me. But in any case, yeah, as Commissioner Russell mentioned, folks that didn't get approved should try again for the next round. And I know personally, natural is for you for many years. And they do so much with so little. So those are the kind of organizations that I wish we could fund that kind of are not your typical types that would ever apply or get any kind of funding. And so, yeah, so those are my comments. But congratulations to everybody that's getting them. And I'm glad that, you know, the ballet group is getting some funding. And I think it's also really important, last thing, for folks to come to this meeting and to use public comment to talk about the things that are coming up. You know, this is great that we had presentations today. Usually, there's nobody here, except for Commissioner Russell's daughter. Yeah, Trooper. Yeah, forcefully or whatnot, but here nonetheless. And so, because, you know, that... And so, because that, you know, that, that helps us to get, put a face to the, to the organization, to the grant, to the application. And to put things on our radar so that we can attend, you know, and, and do these things, you know. I'm, I know Moises Camacho for years has been doing good work in the community. Glad that you're working with him and, and other folks are, are, you know, able to, to engage in this healing process of it. So those are my comments, thank you.
Tram, do you know how many applications we've approved total to date this round?
Normally I have that number, I'm so sorry. I don't have it ready.
No worries.
Today.
No worries, I do think that the projects that we've been approving this round have been very wide and diverse. From like the communities they serve, the communities they represent, like all sorts of like establishments. From all sorts of communities and it's, it's just been really wonderful to go through this process once again. And to know that we are helping like disperse this money into our city as equitably as we can to really like kickstart, to really, you know, just continue to build the lively art scene, the, the culture that we have here in Santa Ana. And I'm just so proud to be a part of this process every time. I really want to echo what Commissioners Russell and Hernandez said about, please, please, please reapply if you did not receive funding for whatever reason. And please reach out for feedback. I know we've had instances where if there weren't, if there wasn't any feedback given in the first round when we review it. Tram has reached out to us to, so that we can give extra feedback for these applications to be revised. For myself, my goal is never to necessarily like reject applications. But it is to, to approve the, the great applications that come through. And so I would really love for as many projects this round and, and next round as possible to get approved.
I would just like to say yes and to everything that's been said. To encourage people to come and talk to us and make this real. Like we get a bazillion emails and I get them in my day job and then we get them as commissioners. It's really beautiful when people come here and we see a face and I'm writing all these notes like, oh, I gotta get that. Cause I'm creating an arts and culture bulletin for my daily work landscape. And I'm going, oh my gosh, we gotta connect this and we can connect that. And it just makes it real and personal when your faces are here and you're sharing what's going on in advance. Maybe we can't all be there, but we have a way to activate or get people there or collaboratively support in different ways. So thank you for being here and all the applications that are coming. I too am sometimes disappointed when things don't go through. And we all have our different ways of looking at it. So yes, get feedback so we can reevaluate. Cause I think there's so much art in nature. Just want to say that. Any other comments? Thoughts?
I'll just reiterate, because we did get requests for feedback in the last round or two. And, you know, it's great to be able to fund experiences for our residents rather than tables and chairs. Or, you know, even, I know marketing is expensive, but even in this round in particular, I think there were a couple proposals where the marketing budget was very inflated. And then there were others where it was very deep, you know, this is how much Facebook ads cost. And, and, and so when you look at the one where it's kind of a more humble approach to the marketing, for instance. And you can see that they do want to, you know, compensate artists, they want to provide interactions for artists, I'm sorry, for residents. Those will always, I think, have favor over more passive types of experiences. And I just think that's so important that we hope to fund those experiential things. And maybe not everyone has a tarp over them or, or, you know, a tent over them for the experience. But, you know, they, they get something that's very unique and personalized. And so it's nice to be able to highlight those.
Thanks for reminding me too, because it was really great to see to Chair Hernandez's point. How there were people that had said, oh, we've got all these different funding sources already. So we're just asking for this amount to help because they're looking at their own sustainability and not looking at this as their whole way of activating the arts that they're looking at a bigger connection. And to me, that says that will be a sustainable, that helps indicate for me, a sustainable event. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. I will be sending you the total number, yes, after this meeting.
I will, I will be sad to see this go away. Just be, although, you know, it's, it's a joy to read them, but also like, it's lovely to hear what's going on out there and all of that. So to that end, can you, are there any projections for what we'll be able to do next year at this point?
I think with ARPA money ending, I think a lot of the funding will probably go to the artist grant itself as opposed to a sponsorship program.
Okay. Alright, well, I'm sure we'll be following up in the coming days on that note. Alright, this is the time for the staff to share any comments with the commission. Do you have any comments?
I don't really have any, a lot of comments, but just wanted to remind everybody about the very first, hopefully annual Thud Festival that the city is, is producing, amazing. So February 3rd from 2 to 7, they're gonna have fireworks over the, the lake there. Traditional art, library lane, story time. And they are gonna give out gifts, little gifts for everybody, so it'll be a fun thing. I think if we can all come, that'd be great. That's it?
Beautiful.
I'm sorry? 2 to 7, yes.
Did you give us one of those? No.
No.
You sent.
But I sent the email.
Yes.
Yes.
I do recall, okay. Does the commission have any comments they wish to share at this time?
I always like to try to highlight events that are coming up that might not be on people's radar. And it looks like January 27th, you know, Art Walk is usually the day when there are so many things going on and off, on offer. But January 27th has, Libra Mobile will be celebrating their poet laureate or the Orange County poet laureate at their bookstore location. The Orange County Musicians Union is having a concert and I have yet to get out to visit them, so I'm so excited. It's a pirate themed one, which would be very interesting at their musicians hall on South Main. The OCA will have the artist talk, I think that day, we'll have, we'll have an artist talk that day. And, oh, sorry, Creator will have an artist talk today, I'm sorry. And then OCA will have their closing reception. So if you are looking for something or looking to check out an organization who probably will be applying for grants in the future, like maybe the Musicians Union or Libra Mobile, what a great opportunity to see their offerings and to see who's in the audience too. I find that always fascinating to see who comes to these events and, and, you know, just to talk to them and find out what it means to have things like this that are accessible, oft, most often free and unique, you know, something that you don't see in other cities that makes Santa Ana special. And somewhat, somehow the homework has to get done.
Okay, I'm just gonna say this. I watch this commission as leaders, I watch what's happening at the state and people shaping around arts policy and things that are happening to create access and that. And today in Santa Ana Unified School District, we kicked off our Arts Student Union. I started it before the pandemic, but it's back now since the pandemic, fully activated with all the things that have happened. So we have students that are leading because when we want to say what is happening, we need to go to the end users. And so I would like to help create a space and place for them to see themselves in these spaces. So I, I'm excited about that because it's specifically around how to activate the community through the arts and what their lens is. And so who knows, they may be reaching out to you. I'm excited too that we're expanding Boca De Oro this year to include a college and career fair. So that we can help, continue to help families understand their viable things. Cause I had a graduate of SAUSD say to me, how, how do I help my parents understand that I still, I, I want to be me, the artist, not do what they think I should do, but how can they continue to follow their dreams, having been a graduate and part of what, the work that we've been doing? So thank you again for creating spaces and places for everybody. And I'm very excited to see what's gonna happen with this group of youth leaders that we're helping to support, to realize their dreams. You never know, they may come to you. Okay, so without any further comment, I'm looking forward to all the upcoming events. And thank you, Tram, for continuing to give us the calendars outside of calendar invites, which would be great. But anyway, thank you for coming and being here tonight. And with that, our next meeting is on February 22nd at 5:30.